In order, please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A roll call?
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderwoman Cleghorn. Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Ideman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Arbrooster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Move for approval of the agenda?
No move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us down to a personal appearance. Gina, you're up. Gina Bennett's with us tonight.
Hello. I'm gonna make it short and sweet. There's a volleyball game tonight. I want to get to it. Y'all have a busy agenda. I want you to get to it. I invite everybody who wants to come to a later date that we'll figure out with Happy and Steve and Gary. We need to walk around St. Genevieve and find out the places where it's dangerous to walk with a walker. There's not very many crosswalks. The handicap spots need rethought. There could be one more added where? I don't know. Because there's a lot of considerations that you all know I don't. I've been around forever. I have been in this building and in a lot of buildings and witnessed a lot of stuff. Just know I have a photographic memory, which is blessing and a curse. I forget everything from the past because it doesn't matter. I think about the future. I don't worry about any of it, though, because other people are taking care of it. Law enforcement can handle it. The only thing I can offer, if asked, is insight and training from my past experience and every video I've ever kept, every photograph I've ever kept of trauma and abuse I suffered since I could carry a camera. It's not something to pity a person about. It's just something to be knowledgeable about. Don't expect good things to happen when people are treated bad. Not intentionally, but they were. They're mentally ill or they're not. Mostly, it's trauma response, and they go off. So, think kindly, plan for the future, and listen when people tell you things. People who know try to tell you and you don't listen, bad stuff happens, always. That's pretty much it. Any questions? Doubtful? Okay, move along.
Sounds good. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Takes us to city administrator's report.
You have an updated report in front of you, which has nothing new on it, because I didn't really update it. I didn't get a chance. I already printed it by the time I got information on the ARPA funding. So, this is the month we're supposed to find out about water, sewer, stormwater, and those are supposed to, those grant requests that have been put in are supposed to be announced. However, apparently, there was, there's 400 million in distribution money that they had set up, and there's been a billion dollars in requests. So, they're working their way through them, and it's gonna take a little longer than anticipated. So, it's, you know, everybody, everybody, and everybody put in for it, and multiple projects. So, we'll see what happens when the distribution comes out. That can affect our streets that we're gonna talk about in our work session, but that's something just to keep in mind. But, at this point, no announcements have been made. And that's all I got. I still got the questions about the report.
Are we talking about the November and December meetings, or is that gonna be on the agenda next month?
Oh, yeah. No, no. It's probably to talk about them now, so we can plan ahead. So, in November, in December, we've had, I think, one meeting each month. It just depends on where you want to place it. First meeting's in November, and the first meeting in November is November 10th, and then the first meeting in December is the 8th. So, we have those for sure. But, it depends on what you want to do with the second meeting. If you want to postpone them, cancel them, leave them on there as a just-in-case, and we figure on that Monday before we would normally have a meeting. Last year, we didn't have to worry about that. So, you know, it would be Monday, November 21st, and December 19th. If something important came up, we could meet, but otherwise, not meet. But, depends on what the board wants to do.
Do you anticipate anything coming up in November?
No, I think we're gonna cover it. Well, we'll cover it in November meeting. If we don't get to, we'll cover it in the December meeting. I don't see any urgency in anything.
But, that timeframe in between, if come November 10th and we decide we need another meeting, so that gives us enough time to properly notify and do all that, yeah?
Yeah. I mean, as long as y'all are comfortable with something like that. I mean, technically, we advertised it that Friday before, and that's how, we made the 24-hour rule in that case. But, it's just so you can kind of, you know, plan ahead and not interrupt some activity or vacation or whatever that's coming up.
Yeah. Worked in the past, hasn't it, Joe?
Yeah. We've been doing it for the last three, four years, to my recollection.
We have been. We have been.
Worked out.
Most boards and councils I've been on have done that, and that seems to have worked best. As long as we had to schedule, we could schedule it.
Yeah.
It's not like we want to push anything big through when half the community's trying to celebrate the holidays, too, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
I just want to use the mayor up while he's here, yeah, stuff.
We can schedule extra meetings before April if you want.
Oh, yeah. I don't like that idea.
April 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th?
Yes.
Marathon.
Weekend meetings?
Alright, so we'll plan on, again, first, two, first meetings of the month, for sure. The others will just play by ear, see if anything important comes up. If the board decides they need to meet, we can do that. Okay, thank you for saying something. Is there anything else? Takes us to our staff reports. Jason?
Good evening. You guys have my report in front of you. I changed a couple things out, tried to add a little bit. One of the biggest things under calls for service, you'll see the K-9 Mario reports, and just kind of keep the city, you know, up to date on what the dog's doing, on what activities he's been involved in. I didn't go back to the beginning of time. Since we've had the dog, we just started with January 1st until the end of September. But, then each month, we'll add that to the reports as well, and just try to keep you guys up to date on that. As far as staffing, we'll be down, down one position, for sure. And then, we also have a guy that's going to be out on extended military leave by the end of the year, probably be four months, and then, starting the first year, it's probably gonna be an additional year on top of that. Training, we got a couple guys in training this week. Facility, we took a lightning strike to the generator, took out a couple panels on it. I think BT Electric has met with Happy now, and the parts are on order, so hopefully, that'll be back online before long. We've had some issues with water coming in the garage and creating some mold issues. I've met with Happy, so we're starting to work on getting that resolved and moving forward with that. So, you guys will probably have something before you, hopefully, by next meeting. Other than that, we, Officer Puccinelli had applied for a grant through vested interest in canines. That was approved. We've had to do some press release stuff. It's been a nightmare, but Happy's kind of helped with that. I don't know if it ever met their standards or not, but...
Finally, finally got it done.
Okay. So, it should be on order now, but that was 100% covered for the dog. Any question?
Is that generator able to be used manually, like turned on manually?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, follow-up to that question. Did BT give you any info, like, how did, how did it get, what would we do to mitigate the...
I did not talk to BT Electric, so I do not, I don't have the answer to that. I don't know if he told Happy anything about...
I'm just curious if we're lacking some other safeguard out there that we could...
To stop the lightning from striking around the area, that would probably have helped, because that's what did it. It was a lightning strike.
Just go out there with a key, that would...
Circuits, it burned up the circuitry, the low voltage circuitry in the equipment.
Okay.
So, it was in the generator, in the transfer switch, and there was another piece of it also burned. I'm not sure where that was. But, we figured the engine's in good shape. It's just the electronics.
But, nothing that leads you to believe that there's any vulnerability that we could fix or correct to avoid in the future?
Probably have to put some sort of suppressor in front of that, and I don't know what that cost would be. And I think it's the only time that we've had that kind of an issue happen, but we just never know.
Yep.
So, we are online to get it fixed. Parts are ordered.
Parts are ordered, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to know about that, too, just to see if there's something, big surge protector or something.
By the time you repaired it a couple times, could you maybe prevent it?
Right.
Well, what about lightning rod? Remember, they were on every house and years, many years ago?
It'd be good.
Yeah, there you go.
Might be something BT can help us with, maybe?
Yeah.
Is there, as far as Mario's concerned, don't they have a scheduling, go by? I mean, like, the schools, don't they go to the schools like once a month or something?
Yes, yeah. He's, he just started, the school's invited him. More, more so on, you know, certain times for the kids, just to get to know the dog on a friendly basis and not just always work-related. So, you know, certain ones, periods of stuff, he goes out, you know, where the little kids can hang out with the dog and spend their recess with him, so...
Yeah. I did have a little chat with him one day, and he was kind of filling me in on that, and I thought it was good.
Yeah, yeah, it's wonderful. Well, so far.
You chat with the dog?
Yeah, me and Mario.
Jason, not, not to stick with Mario too much, but do you know, or have you had conversation with the prosecutors as far as if Amendment 3 passes, how that would impact the department and Mario specifically?
If it does pass, if it's not appealed, and when it goes into effect, the current canines that are in use will be deemed out of service. I mean, we won't...
Statewide?
Yes.
Oh, what happened to them?
So, you know, and that's something, when that time comes, we'll approach the board and see how we're gonna proceed from there.
Okay. And do you know of any other potential impacts on the department?
Not right off.
Okay, thanks.
And I do know that, you know, now that you had mentioned that, it was brought to our attention from some other departments, that they're looking into, some of the insurances, insurance companies are gonna cover it as a loss, because, you know, when the amendment passes, that the dogs will be deemed unusable then. So, some of the liability insurance companies are gonna cover, cover it. So, I don't know if that'll work with ours or for something that we want to even entertain, but some of the departments are already looking into that, and their insurance companies are entertaining it.
So, do you think that there will be, at some point, dogs available that are trained?
The dogs for the last, well, the company that we go through, I know for the last two years, have not been training theirs for marijuana detection. So, the dogs for the last two years that they've been producing. So, I'm sure most companies are on board with the same thing, knowing that this was coming.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Steve?
Evening.
Everybody knows it's been dry out. Ground's dry, very hard. We did end up with a couple main breaks last month, early this month, one being Mike's driveway. Thanks for inviting us over.
Anytime.
As a result of that leak, we did have another leak from operating valves on Parkwood, which we continued to fix till about 2:00 in the morning that night, and then, we broke off for, for the guys and for parks. So, we resumed fixing that one at about 7:00 in the morning. So, got the guys a day break. Other than that, continuing to work towards completing the building at the water plant for the electrical building. It's framed up, concrete's done, trusses are up. Hopefully, within the next few working days, we'll have, have the roof on. Bruce Terry has been by. He was there prior to construction of it and installed all his conduits. Everything's in place. He also stopped by today, said everything was looking good. He had no problem with the construction of the building for his purposes, so...
What about his equipment going in there and stuff? Is he got all of that, or is it...
He has some stuff. Transfer switch he's waiting on, switch gear he's waiting on, a couple breakers. But, he does have the VFDs and the majority of the components, so...
So, what happens then, once he has all of that stuff in that building? How do we go from inside to outside and not lose any water production?
He'll put all the, all the components inside the new building that's going up, and then, he'll switch over one, one section at a time. So, and we'll accommodate when we can accommodate. Otherwise, you know, we may have to shut the plant down or change schedules. I'm sure he'll have to work around our schedule, you know, for the majority of it.
Whenever, you sometimes have to get on somebody's property, or is that considered an even, I guess?
It's considered an even.
But, if it's like their lawn, let's say, it's always put back the way it was?
Correct.
I was just curious. I know that, I thought there was some time you'd have to do that.
Yeah. And what we do is, when we excavate someone's yard, we always leave dirt or leave it, barricade it off if we know it's gonna settle, and then, we'll come back, repair it when the settling's complete, so we only have to do it once. So, yeah, we always grade it out, seed and straw it, make sure for proper drainage.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Steve, with all the drought and stuff, I mean, as far as the wells and stuff, everything...
We were, we've been monitoring the well levels very closely. They were lower than normal, lower than I like them, but it wasn't in the danger zone. After the rain the other day, the well levels came up about three foot per well, also giving us a little more relief, so, so, no worries as of now.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any committee reports?
No.
Nothing? Any public comments? Have the paperwork in front of you, then we'll move for the consent agenda.
There's no question.
Second.
Wait a minute, we gotta look at that.
Oh, we gotta look at that.
That's on O2.
May I have a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. There is no old business, so it takes us to new business. Have some quotes in front of you for the pump replacement of the water plant. It'll need approval to go forward.
What does that pump actually do?
The pump that you have the quote for in front of you is for the high-service pump for the water treatment plant. That's the, that's the electric motor that supplies basically the town with water. Now, we do have other pumps that we use as well, but this is one of them.
So, we have a backup?
Yes.
Right.
So, EquipmentPro, that's our local company right here in town.
Yes.
That's great.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us to the first reading of Bill Number 4519, An Ordnance of the City of St. Genevieve Amending Chapter 200 Police Department of the St. Genevieve Municipal Court of Ordinances, as set forth below. Motion to approve?
Second.
Whatever. Yeah. May I have a motion in the second?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number 4519, An Ordnance of the City of St. Genevieve Amending Chapter 200 Police Department of the City of the, of the St. Genevieve Municipal Court of Ordinances, as set forth below.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Ideman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbrooster. Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4519 now becomes ordinance 4441.
Thank you. Takes us to the first reading of Bill Number 4520, An Ordnance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Municipal Agreement for Public Improvements Along St. Mary's Road.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
I get, all in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to the second reading of Bill Number 4520, An Ordnance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Municipal Agreement for Public Improvements Along St. Mary's Road.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arbrooster.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Ideman.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4520 now becomes ordinance 4442.
Thank you. First reading of Bill Number 4521, An Ordnance Calling for the General Election of Officers of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to be held April 4th, 2023, and providing notice to the general public.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading of Bill Number 4521, An Ordnance Calling for the General Election of Officers of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to be held April 4th, 2023, and providing notice to the general public.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Ideman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arbrooster. Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4519 now becomes ordinance 4443.
Thank you. There's no, is there any other business? As far as communications, I'd like the board's approval to appoint Jason Crump as our new police chief. Do you need a motion on that? Need a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's taken care of. Congratulations. If there's no other business, I will call this meeting adjourned. All right.
All right.
Call to order our work session. Need to, uh... Yeah, approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy it's all yours.
Let's start talking street repaving for twenty-twenty-three.
Oh, that's awesome.
So, our budget amount this coming year is three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. What I have listed is the streets that were ranked lowly, uh, the ones that needed the most work, uh, from our estimations. Gag, Jefferson, Moreau. Ninth Street has been discussed a number of times. St. Jim, Wyler, Claymont, uh, and then we've had, so down to Claymont, and then we've had discussion about Audubon, LaRose, the remaining part of Lynn. Uh, we are, after that, we are looking at the waterline project, potential waterline project. So, that's Rosier Street, North Fourth Street, Roberts, and Lehey.
And those are all the waterlines that were slated for this next budget?
That's part of that ARPA.
Twenty-twenty-three?
Yeah, it's part of ARPA. Um, the ARPA replacement is what those are.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the full distances that we would have to be replacing or covering after we do the waterline project. Um, they can, you know, you can patch it and then leave it. You don't have to do that immediately, but it's just something to think about, and they are on the schedule in the future anyway.
So, Happy, I, uh, I'm gonna jump in here first on Ninth Street. Um, you know, with all of the traffic up there and stuff, but I've not been, uh, in favor of overlaying it because of a lot of issues up there. Um, instead of money in there for, uh, overlaying and stuff, could we put engineering fees in there to basically start the process?
If you'd like to. Uh, the estimate on the, the cost to do that street's about three times, four times the amount that we have listed there, so it'll be...
To completely do the whole street, so, right?
Steve, you got a minute?
Yep.
So, any idea of a study to fix the problems there?
If you're talking about an engineering plan, you're probably looking at twenty-five or thirty-five thousand to, to do the engineering.
Okay, so, um, you know, looking at a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar project's probably a long ways off, but is it feasible to do it in phases once we have the engineering? Uh, because that should be done all at once, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
So, we develop a plan and then we do it in phases then of so many dollars a budget year? Is that...
I don't know if you want to phase something like that, because then you're gonna end up with a transition issue between your sections. So, we do the longer sections like Fourth Street. We did, you know, from, well, from the end of maintenance up to Washington, and then we went, you know, Roberts up north, and then we had that section in between. So, those are pretty long distances. Ninth Street's not that long, and so you start cutting that up, you're gonna end up with overlays that are just kind of, or sections that, that are probably not gonna play well with each other.
I mean, Steve, do you have an idea what all needs to be done there? I mean, this stormwater drainage is pretty hit and miss and pretty antiquated.
Yeah, um, so lots of stormwater issues. There's houses on the lower end that if you were doing overlay, then it would just, the water just run into your front door, basically. Um, we've had issues with the culvert pipe at the end of the road, which collapsed next to the house on the corner, uh, a couple of years ago, and that had to be replaced. I think that was a forty-inch culvert.
Which one is that?
It was on the corner of Ninth.
Oh, Ninth and Market, right over that big gray horse.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that storm drain collapsed. I can't imagine the rest of it's, you know, in great shape.
But that was at Ninth and Washington, wasn't it, where you had a problem?
Yeah, we had a problem there, too.
Yeah, that's that resolved, though, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we replaced that pipe as well.
Yeah.
Um, further up the hill, you have a box culvert where the utilities actually, uh, go under it. I believe one utility may go through the box culvert. Um, and if you were to redo that, it'd be very tricky to do around the, the corner of the house that sits on the side of that hill. So, there's, there's quite a few issues.
You know, and the reason I bring that up, because when we rerouted the traffic up there, we took most everything off of Eighth Street, and now everything is on Ninth Street, both coming and going. Um, but, you know, to think two-hundred-plus-thousand dollars plus engineering, that was our whole budget on one street, but...
I think you gotta look at that. I think, I think we've done a lot of hit and miss and all around. I think you, I, if I, if, and this is your decision, because y'all have to live with it, but I'd, I'd rather see us do that maybe one year, maybe fix one street or go over into Ashley's neighborhood and just fix, fix one street. Spend the money to fix one street, you know? I know it's not popular, but it's, I think that's the way to go. I think we need to go that way. We've, we've hit some streets around here, and, you know, I'd like to see this, I know we have this one section here, because of drainage, we hadn't done any with. That's gonna be a complete section from town all the way to the park. And we've done that. We've done Main Street down there. We went all the way to the park. We did Lynn out there. We went all the way around. I wish we could get the other, and the same thing in the, in the Rosier, in the subdivision over here. We, we, we've circled it, but now it's time to fix streets.
Right.
You know, and, and I know it's a, it's tough, but I, I, that are, I tell you what, folks, I would really seriously, and I think you wouldn't get a lot of pushback, and nobody, I, I consider a bond issue. I really think if you're gonna put it to streets, people will get on board and support that and say, hey, yeah, let's do that. I really think you should give that to the voters. I think I'd put it, I don't know what you'd have to do to get it on the ballot in April, but I would let the people decide how serious, because they all complain about streets, and they, they probably wouldn't mind seeing us get some streets fixed. And it's gonna take some serious money and somebody to get serious to do it. And, but I really think that you could, that you could get, you, the people would be awful, would be in favor of that. I really don't think you'd get much pushback. You'd have some more money to work with, to do some, to get some things fixed, so...
You know, and that's subject, Steve. I mean, is that what we did, like on McCombe Day and Rosier? And, I mean, did we throw all our money one time into, because those were rebuilds?
Yeah, Ro, portion of Rosier was rebuilt, um, to some extent there. Uh, Porta Street was completely replaced with concrete.
Right.
Uh, Pine Drive was replaced, curb gutter, concrete. Um, but, yeah.
Well, uh...
Maple was done, but then that's all, that's all we did that year. Total... I think you gotta, I think you gotta look at doing that.
You know, and the only reason I brought up in sections and stuff, because that's what we have done on Fourth Street.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I thought of that, too.
You know, it was just overlays and stuff.
Yeah.
But how do we, what's the next step in that? Who, who does the legwork on bringing that bond issue to, to us to put it on, to get it on the ballot?
I had it all lined up. Early on, there was some lady that I met with five years ago. Now, what happened, Martin and I met with her, and she's, she does that. Joy Howard. That's it. That lady. And, uh, she did all the, she does all the legwork. Joy Howard. You know, to, to do something like that, and I, I encourage you to...
Well, can we revive that effort? Do we need to talk about that tonight, to give somebody a thumbs up to do that, or...
So, is she from the bonding company?
She is an independent, not, she's not fiduciary, but she's independent, and she is, she'll work with the city for the city's best interest and then go out for bonding. And it could be from any company that wants to...
She's like a consultant of some sorts, right?
Yep. Financial advisor.
What's her fee?
Depends on how much you're gonna spend. It's a percentage.
Oh, I'll go by the amount we spent.
Yep.
I'd, I'd tell you, that's something, Neil. I, I think the people would vote for it.
I'd like to see us formally discuss it on an agenda item, if that's what it takes, and then bring it to, bring it, bring it to fruition somehow, that, on the ballot.
But I mean, we are in the position, Happy, as a city, to take on additional...
Yeah, we have some, we have space.
Well, I mean, this is different than what we've done with the firehouse or any of the sewer plants that we've done, or with, those weren't just normal bond issues.
You've got different pots of money that you're pulling out of. The problem with the street is that you, you use up all the money every year from that fund, so there's not like extra in there for a bond payment. So, water sewer is its own, and you have to then borrow against that income that you have, the revenue that you're making in the, in the water sewer department. That's what helps you pay for your infrastructure and how to maintain it. So, for the streets, you're gonna have to come up with another funding source for that loan payment that you're going to have each year. Uh, so, we have a capital improvement tax that we use right now for payment on equipment that we've bought. It will then go towards the tower out at, uh, the water, right, out of the water park, and we'll, we'll be paying on that. So, there's a little bit that's in that, in that fund that we could use to help pay for part of that, that loan. Problem is, we're gonna use it for City Hall for the next couple of years, uh, to redo the boardroom and the, and the, and the City Hall part. So, um, we can, we can look at what that requirement would be, what you would initially have to borrow, what the interest rate would be, and then what your payment would end up being every year, and see what we have capacity for and what our revenues are.
I just didn't wanna use up all of our funds. You know, there's so many things we need to do. I think it needs to be shared, you know, around and stuff, but I, somewhere along the line, we have to start the process.
For, for Ninth Street, is what you're saying?
Right, just as, you know, traffic flowing, and by the time the school gets their early childhood development building up there, um, you know, we're talking more traffic flow up through there differently than what it is now, somewhat.
Well, and I don't, I don't disagree with that, Bob, but I think it's something that we have to plan for. I'd, I'd have trouble approving Ninth Street for this project just because we're gonna wanna go out to bid, what, beginning of the year, per usual?
Yep.
And I don't think we'll be ready for all that we really need to do.
Right, yeah, and I'm not asking...
And people will continue with the conversations of streets aren't getting done, this or that.
Yeah, and that's why I say I'm not up for spending seventy-three thousand dollars, but maybe twenty-five thousand to get it started in the engineering fees, so we can make something happen there within the next few years.
So, one of the things that also included the, the sheet that Cochran came up with, what they, what they've kinda done to break it down is you have, you can see what streets they picked one year for twenty-twenty-three and then twenty-twenty-four, and then skip a year, and then that's how they were trying to catch up with these groupings, so that you could do the neighborhoods instead of just doing one street. You do a group of streets. I mean, and the best way to do that was to skip a year. You just do crack fill and then go in and do all the repair, or the asphalt overlay or the repair of pavement that you needed to do.
How didn't they pay for St. Jude when it was the whole neighborhood done? We just did that every year. We take a street at a time and just, we budget part. That was new curbs and everything, I was wondering.
But that was basically an all-in-one?
Well, we didn't do it all at once. We took a free...
No, I realize that, but I mean, you did a complete rebuild.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
The whole, the whole St. Jude subdivision, yeah, that's right. Yeah.
It's just about, like, if you get over into my neighborhood, almost every street needs work, except for the one half of Lynn, and Austin's still doing all right. But, I mean, I would say LaRose is probably the worst out of the bunch, and then Audubon and Scott are probably neck and neck.
I don't know. Do you, do you, then do you, can you look at engineering for those streets, too? And then, and maybe do, maybe you do some of Lynn, wrestle Lynn and, and do Austin Street. Get, if it's, if it's in good shape, it's best to get it done before it gets in bad shape.
Where are we at with the stormwater study?
We should hear something by December.
Because that's, that's, like, I wanna come to this table, and I wanna fight for my neighborhood, because of the, the residents that are in my ear for it, like, they deserve that. But at the same time, I know, um, a handful of neighbors on Scott Street are having a lot of water issues when we have those rains, so I do hesitate a little bit to, to push for some of these streets before we get that stormwater study back, because I really wanna do it right the first time.
Well, that'll help, too, on Ninth Street. That's, that's, that's in that study also.
And, and so that's why I'm almost of the mind that maybe this year we continue with our, um, kinda scattered picking and choosing, following the waterline, but really making a plan ahead of time before we get to next year's budget, and working in the, uh, the street pavement program, the water, the, uh, the waterline project, the stormwater, looking at that as a big picture, and maybe taking conference plan and figuring out as a board where we need to move the years and the streets and stuff like that. And, um, just 'cause I don't know how many hundreds of thousands, maybe millions of dollars that we've wasted over decades because we go and do a project and we have to go and dig it up again, or redo it, or it created an issue that we didn't have the foresight for, and we have all these plans in place to give us that foresight and the future boards, and I, I really want us to think long-term on it, so that, that's kinda where I'm at right now. I don't have a great recommendation for tonight, but that's because I, I don't feel like we have all the pieces that we need to really go after my neighborhood or to go after Ninth Street, so...
But can we get clarification on that Audubon line item with the, uh, what, what are we buying potentially for a hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars? Is that the, didn't we talk about that not having a proper base?
Yes.
And, and so is that included in that price?
Yes, that's, that's, and I'm making, you know, judgments off what I, what we've looked at paving the last few years, what that cost would be to pull off all that asphalt, redo the base. And I, I mean, we're not doing a full base. We're doing, you know, repairs and then going back with, I think, either two or three inches of asphalt.
So, and, and Ashley, not to, not to argue about things, um, I'm obviously outside your neighborhood there, but I don't know if that, having a, it's certainly not the only street in that condition, though, right? We have others that don't have a proper base?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I would assume with that, that price on LaRose being so similar, that that's...
Yeah, that's their...
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't even...
And it's mainly, I think, towards the curbing, because we're, and you get that from trash trucks and stuff, where you, when I've been over there and looking at, in that neighborhood, it's, a lot of it isn't to the curbs, to the side of the street, because you're sinking, you know, so...
Yeah, Ashley, Lynn, too, were missing the decimal points on it.
Yeah, that's why, yeah. I had the second look. I'm like, wait a minute.
Jumped over there.
It makes sense, huh?
All those are missing.
You know, Paul, I, I mean, I agree with you. Rebuilding them is right, but, you know, is, is that fair to look at that now, or is that fair once we get a few more of these streets fixed, then look at that? Um, you know, because I think the paving that we've done has had a big impact on the way things look and people's perception, um...
It's depending on where you live.
Well...
That's right. If you live on Jefferson, not so much.
Well, you know, when it comes to streets in town being rough, I'd put Jefferson up among any of them and stuff, but, you know, the traffic flow through there is not as heavy as it in some of the other areas and stuff, and I hate to say head count doesn't count, but...
Well, it's just it needs to, you know, like, like I say, that's, they all, there's, that's why I say you need, we need more money to work with.
Right.
You gotta have more money to work with to, to hit that, and, and you're still not gonna, you can't borrow enough money to fix all the problems, but, or you can, you can get, you can put a dent in it and then maybe catch up to it later on, you know, so...
I, I think we can all agree that, uh, finishing out Fourth Street is gonna be approved, really.
Yeah, we need to finish that. Yeah, let's get that done.
And I just think it makes a huge difference. If, if we're gonna go and inconvenience people with replacing water lines, let's just do everything that we can.
Well, and so, and not to hijack your comment either, but clarification on that Claymont line item. That's, uh, first of all, twenty-five thousand, what's that by? And secondly, that's attached to the waterline replacement schedule there as well, right?
Correct.
So, scheduled for twenty-three?
Uh, I'd have to look at the schedule, but I know what's on there.
Got it.
Somebody's prepared.
Not that, not that we talked about.
Shut up, actually, you should stop over there.
But the waterline is in the, yes.
Twenty-three.
Waterline's not in the street.
Okay, so those projects wouldn't necessarily touch each other. Okay, so what are you buying for twenty-five thousand? Are you buying...
Replacing the bad concrete from Parkwood to the cul-de-sac Circle.
Okay.
Circle's in good shape, but you're getting the rest of it.
Both sides?
Yeah.
Well, no, no, no.
No.
You need to get one side at a time.
One strip.
One strip down the middle.
For, for the video, for clarification, anybody watching, both sides is what we've committed to this evening for twenty-five thousand.
Well, we didn't, we didn't commit to that, no.
Not yet.
Yeah.
But that's included in that number.
While we're, while we're talking about bad concrete on those, um, I'd get in, I'd get in trouble with my board if I didn't bring up, um, some of the major issues in Valley Springs. Um, I know I've talked with you about it. I think, maybe you've conversed on it. I don't remember. Um, specifically, I know in front of the Bollinger's house, I can't remember the house number right now, uh, the concrete there has cracked and part of it has sunk, and it is, has, um, busted up the curb with that cracking, and now it exposes the edge of their driveway. Um, so it's like, if we don't begin fixing some of those spots in the, in the concrete in Valley Springs, um, folks like the Bollingers are gonna have to, you know, in the future, fix their driveway.
How old is that, how old is that issue?
Uh, I know that they told me that they've talked to, like, two or at least two prior aldermen before about it.
Okay, because, I mean, that's a repair, right? We're not building new. That's a repair.
Yeah, that's, that's a repair. Two, two weeks ago, I was notified of the problem out there. We went out there and cleaned up at the end of a guy's driveway in the cul-de-sac. Uh, he was very pleased, very happy.
I just didn't know how costly it is, but I, I know that's, um, and, and because, I mean, that, that crack that affects their driveway, it's that whole lane, and that, it's a, you know, it cracks this way and that way and whatever else, so it, sometimes it can seem like a small fix, but if you're gonna fix it right, sometimes it's a little bit bigger, and so I don't know what all that entails, but I just...
So, it's not necessarily...
It's gotta be a little bit more costly. I thought it might be good to bring up now, while we're talking about all this stuff, but if you guys think we can do it without tapping this budget, by all means. I just know that we probably need to get it fixed within the next year.
Well, there's a lot of areas out there that need to be tackled.
Ashley, like I was saying, there's numerous spots out there that we went out and made notations of, and, uh, we're making a plan to repair some of them, so...
Perfect. That's what I like to do.
And you're gonna repair them, then?
Yes.
Oh, that's awesome.
That's what I like to do.
If it, if it's just, you know, a section or half a street where we can, you know, cut a section out, you know, we'll have to rent a breaker for the excavator, but...
Yeah, absolutely. That's great.
Pouring them back in place isn't a problem, so...
Okay. We'll talk more about that.
So, when do we have to have this finalized?
I'm good.
I figured this would be the start of discussion. Yes, I want it all finalized right now.
Okay.
Look that bed packet together. Um, I don't wanna put it off too long again, because we do wanna go out for, get our packets together and send them.
Oh, and we only got two meetings, you know, given my, my, I know of that in November, so, and then December, and you wanna, when do you wanna put it out for bed in January?
Are, are streets like, uh, Gag Street, do they have a decent enough base that's something like, okay, that the Nova Chip or something could have been? Gotcha.
Yeah, that, those, yeah, that's probably one of those that's in the worst shape. The Nova Chip, I'm not sure if we've got any of these streets that would, maybe St. Jim could coal fire Wyler. Um, Claymont, we should just, you know, just destroy it and put gravel back in and not worry about it.
That allows stormwater to...
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, put some straw down.
You're already on video saying otherwise, so I'm not even sweating that.
I just remember that neighborhood was, I thought was all taken care of.
Come on now.
Yeah.
Hey, so, is, is tonight's exercise then to get down to budget to three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, or are we doing something to entertain the entire eight-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand? What, what are we doing tonight?
Uh, well, I mean, I would like to get in within the budget.
So, we wanna strike...
Which is three-twenty-five.
Which is three-twenty-five, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's...
So, the four that are on the very bottom, the waterline and the leftover, is included in that three-twenty-five?
It's included in the eight-twenty-four.
I win.
But it's also...
You'd have to take a cut of the tank.
Part of that budget.
Yes, yeah, because that's what we've always done, is cut the, cut the street to the waterline.
So, if you do those four, you got about seventy thousand left.
Yeah. That, that made it very easy, actually, that assessment, so I agree.
Yeah, that's kinda where I was leaning, is follow the, this year, follow the waterline. Let's get our stuff together for next year, especially if we wanna entertain a bond issue. I'm sure we'll have to have some plans in place to tell the public how we wanna spend it, so...
So, what you would look at is, you've got option one, which would be repairing those streets that are involved in a waterline repair. But if we don't get that ARPA money, we're gonna do fewer sections of waterline. We're not gonna be able to do this, because this is one and a half million dollars of replacement, and we're putting in three-hundred-and-seven-thousand of that. So, we'll have to come back and re-budget what we wanna spend for waterline improvements. So, that'll be different sections. That may end up being Rosier Street, because it's short, but it may be other smaller sections like Claymont, um, other, I'm sorry, but I can't think of offhand the other small sections we have, but there are, there are three or four other small areas that we can, we can do waterline repair.
So, we can't make a solid decision because we're, we're dependent upon knowing what the ARPA funds would be?
Right. But if I've got a, you know, I've got a plan in place, if, if ARPA funds fall through, then I've got backup plans. Instead of coming back and going through this exercise again, if we can kind of narrow it down as to where we wanna be or where we wanna go with them, if ARPA doesn't come through, then I can start, start my progress.
So, to help you nail down a plan, do we need to rank order these? Is that what you, would be helpful for you, or what would be...
Well, and that's kind of, that's kind of what, what Jeff was pointing out, was from Rosier, North North, Roberts, and Lehey, pretty much, that's gonna be if we hit the ARPA funding. We're gonna do all those streets, if we wanna have them smooth streets and not with the, with a cut, uh, for the waterline. Now, outside of that, what are your preferences? If we don't get the ARPA funding, again, we may do some short repairs, but like Claymont isn't gonna affect whether we do Claymont or not. I mean, what do you, what, what streets do you want to get done? Gag is probably one of our worst streets. It is, it, it's pretty much just totally, um, it's been ignored for a long time, and there is no...
and re-budget what we wanna spend for water line improvements. So that'll be different sections. That may end up being Rosier Street because it's short, but it may be other smaller sections like Claymont, other, I'm sorry, but I can't think offhand the other small sections we have, but there are, there are three or four other small areas that we can, we can do water line repairs.
So we can't make a solid decision because we're dependent upon knowing what the ARPA funds would be?
Right. But if I've got, you know, I've got a plan in place, if ARPA funds fall through, then I've got backup plans. Instead of coming back and going through this exercise again, if we can kind of narrow it down as to where we wanna be or where we wanna go with them, if ARPA doesn't come through, then I can start, start my problem.
So to help you nail down a plan, do we need to rank order these, is that what would be helpful for you or what?
Well, and that's kind of, that's kind of what Jeff was pointing out was from Rosier, North North, Robertson, Lehey, pretty much, that's gonna be if we get the ARPA funding, we're gonna do all those streets. If we wanna have them smooth streets and not with a, with a cut for the water line. Now, outside of that, what are your preferences? If we don't get the ARPA funding, again, we may do some short repairs, but like Claymont isn't gonna affect whether we do Claymont or not. I mean, what do you, what, what streets do you want to get done? Gag is probably one of our worst streets. It is, it's pretty much just totally, it's been ignored for a long time and there is no base to it and there's not much asphalt left either. So it's gonna be one of the more costly repairs. Jefferson is rough, Moreau, same thing, St. Jim, those are smaller, smaller sections, Wyler.
I mean, I would think anything that wasn't properly built to begin with is a prime target if we can make that right with this, taking this swing.
Well, and if you're gonna do Gag, you probably should just go ahead and do the Morrow.
So Wyler's in that neighborhood. Claymont, we can just finish up the concrete that we started with Parkwood.
Get it done.
And Ninth Street from seventy-three thousand to twenty-five, just to get it engineered?
Okay. I'm gonna put the higher number on that, cause I don't.
Is there, is there somewhere else we could find money for engineering so that we can?
Keep that for.
Keep that for paving?
Well, the thing is, if we do get the ARPA money, the three, Gag, Morrow and Claymont has used the money up.
You did the math already, didn't you?
Actually, it's over, but.
Good job.
I would, I would like to entertain trying to find engineering money somewhere other than this three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
I'd agree. Just because it's already out there that this is what we budgeted and when we start pulling that away, cause I wouldn't even want it for engineering in my neighborhood, I wouldn't wanna take away from that, just be, you know, the residents are, they want streets and they want something that they can see and they can't see engineering.
So how much will the stormwater, will we be duplicating in an engineering fee for a street when we, I mean, is there any overlap and stuff as far as?
You know, look at what the problem points are and then you'll engineer to fix that. Now, whether that's on the street or off the street, if it's on the street, yeah, we'll know what the problem is, but.
How much detail they'll give us, you know, on a particular street like that?
It wouldn't be a draft engineering plan of how to fix that.
Right.
It would be, here's where the water's coming from.
Coming, water flow and, right. Cause I know you talked about size of cul, they look at size of culvert pipes and, you know, things like that they assess and.
And I know you wanna pull this out of another fund, but we put a little money in engineering every year for streets, it's like five thousand dollars, that's all we put in there, so.
But it's not doable.
What we have left is this that we put into the, into the streets themselves, which includes engineering, which includes any other improvements that we need to make. It may be sidewalks, it may be, I mean, even the engineering that we're looking at for Fourth Street, you know, it's gonna have to come out of this fund, cause I don't, I don't have anything. Unless you wanna pull it out of Capital Projects.
Yeah, I agree with Susie, you know, I hate to pull that money out of actual road construction and stuff, it's just that we have to start sometime up there and, you know.
What about pulling out of Capital Projects?
Pulling out of Capital Projects, yeah.
Susie?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'd be fine, I feel better about that.
Yeah, I agree, I think that's a great idea. It's time to start some real.
Get some plans.
Patches, not patches.
So the other option that I can throw out, the other option I can throw out is that we would still have a transfer from general fund into Capital Projects, cause I think we have a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-five thousand that's left that we're supposed to transfer of the three, of the six-hundred-and-twenty-five that we started with. We could then get into the reserves in general fund, but that's gonna, that'll probably put us over our fifty percent rule, so that's the only other way to look at it. The only other spot I have any money that I'm anticipating that there's gonna be extra.
When do we find out about ARPA money?
Uh, two weeks ago. I think it's gonna, I have not been given a deadline, they're still looking at everything, so they're just overwhelmed, so I'm figuring before Thanksgiving. So that's why I'm not gonna go out for bids anyway till January, but. So, all right, so we'll look at engineering out of Capital Projects. For Ninth Street and then the remainder of Fourth Street that we're working on now. So our, our second choice, we had Gag, Moreau and Claymont, do you wanna just do what's in the upper section? I don't think that, I don't think that comes up to three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. It might leave us a little extra. But then again, we may do like Rosier Street and some other streets that would be water line projects, so we can come up with three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand out of that, okay. All right, I'll come back with another list next month and you can review it and see what you think.
Yeah, that's good.
Any other questions? Happy you have anything else?
No, but thank you for taking the time to do this. I know it's not easy, but, do you, do you want me to?
Bring somebody in for the next work session to talk about, to talk about funding for something?
Bond issues, yeah. Got bond issues, you got certificates of participation, you've got, so there's general obligation bonds, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of potentials, some probably wouldn't play into it, but we can.
I'd like to learn more.
Yeah.
Happy you remind me how we repay those, so it is through.
You have to have some sort of funding source, so you either.
And that is sales tax increase.
No, you need, you've got, you've got some funding source, I mean, you know. You see, it has to come from some source, some, something, some revenue stream that you can dedicate to that payment.
Be tough.
Unless we can find it somewhere in the budget. Now, you've, and again, so if you look at, okay, just to bring this about, so you, let's say we have three-hundred thousand, well, let's say we have five-hundred thousand that we get, we pay three-hundred thousand on the water tank, that would leave two-hundred thousand out of the capital improvements tax. That's one we already have in play. And then we always pave the streets, we'll say we spent three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-fifty. So you could have five-fifty to put back into whatever loan you pull out. You may be paying on that for a longer period, but that's how you would then come up with that money without doing a tax increase. Whether you, whether that's possible or not, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. Cause if it's five-hundred-and-fifty thousand, you're only gonna get five million in a year or in ten years, and if you're looking at a ten million dollar loan, which is kinda what we're looking at with all these streets, and it's gonna be twenty years, that's not the best time period for that type of project, you should pay it off in ten years, that would be the best, so.
Yeah, I'd like to learn more and just go from there and see what our options are and how it all plays out.
Okay.
So this person you're talking about, she will have information on how to secure funding?
I know different people, we can go with whoever you want, but I can get, see if Joy is still doing that work and have her come in and talk to you next month.
Be a good start.
Yeah, see if she's free.
Gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, and it's just a, almost a losing game, right? You get one street done and, you know, by the time we finish everything, it'd be time to circle back, you know, and we'd be fifteen years late to the project, so.
The hope is that if you maintain, better than what we've been maintaining, like the crack seal, you don't have the repairs in ten years, you have in twenty.
So we'll go.
We'll see at the end of December, won't we?
Yeah.
So, and you ought to see the spreadsheet that Ashley came up with, combining the two grids that we have at this point. Pretty nice.
Good job.
Do you find it helpful?
Not yet, cause I'm still just looking at, it fills my screen, it's like, there's a lot of numbers and letters and stuff.
What he's talking about is, I've got a copy of the preventative maintenance plan and the way it's presented here doesn't work for me. So what I did was I put it into a larger spreadsheet, that must have been printed bigger so you can read it, but added a column that we can incorporate our other projects, so we can see like in 2023 what roads would also have water line projects coinciding with it and all that stuff, and I put the roads in here instead of just the groups, so it's a little bit more detailed and I sent it to Happy so it can be a working document and we can maybe add in the estimated cost of the roads and stuff like that, just for future boards to carry.
So they'll make it all-inclusive then of what's costs are involved?
Yeah, and when we get the stormwater study back, we might be able to start breaking that into it and stuff like, but I like the bigger picture, so. We might have that to work with in the future to help us plan.
So if you're listening in war three and you're looking to vote for somebody, that sounds like a brave candidate.
How if they're not on the ballot?
Name-o, so.
Hopefully I didn't violate any, that's not a political ad, hopefully I didn't violate any rules, somebody will let me know.
Only because it's a work session.
Yeah, right.
There you go.
Always a point, actually.
Yeah, the tax commission will be on your front doorstep.
Always a point.
I don't ask, do we have a schedule for crack filling or not?
We need, we gotta get a crack filler first.
Well, that'd be a good idea.
It's in, it's in the budget, we've been looking at.
I was thinking we had something going there.
Is there a training that goes along with, like?
Typically when you buy, you're gonna like, there's probably, there's one day or two that are training.
And I'm like, what are you like, blowout or something in class or if the important manufacturer?
It'll be the manufacturer that will be training.
You know, Steve, one of the things I've noticed on crack filling, it seems like you get this strip of crack filler over the crack, but then shortly the crack's still there, you know, it's like it doesn't go down.
It puts a bubble on the edge.
Typically if you're, right, you wanna fill it with a, you know, foreign material, sand, rock, you know, screening dust or something of that nature to fill the void first.
Right.
Any more questions about the crack filler? Any more questions before I close up the work session?
Thank you.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.